Good evening, everyone. It being seven o'clock and a quorum is present. I'm going to call this July 9th meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board to order. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 28, 2025. This meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so in person or through the Zoom meeting application, the link being able to be found on the town's website. Now, for those who are attending virtually, I apologize. You may be getting a little bit of additional ambient noise tonight. I'm afraid there is no air conditioning in the 1820 courtroom this evening, so all the windows are open. So if you happen to hear some interjections or car noises, you know where it's coming First on our agenda this evening are administrative notes. We'll begin with minutes, and we have minutes tonight from May 20th, May 28th, June 11th, and June 25th. Any questions, comments, corrections from members of the board? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as a group.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, and since everyone is present in the room, Mr. Donaldson is unable to join us via the Zoom application because he is overseas, so he is having trouble getting in. He did try. So I will call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Next on our agenda, we have a grant proposal, the Cooling Corridors Grant Program, Department of Energy and Environment. Mr. Hartman?
So this is simply to go and do this, they require that the planning board support the grant. It's great application, it's a great project, and again, I think what they're asking for is just simply your vote to send a letter of support for the grant request. Required, without it, they can't move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Mr. Mann.
Mr. Hartman, did this come in any fashion before the board beforehand? Because as I understand it, the deadline is in the next couple of days.
Yeah, this was just brought to our attention this week. We had no knowledge that this was coming out until just a couple...
All right, thank you.
Weeks ago. A couple, a week and a half ago, probably.
Mr. Grandy?
Motion to support the application for the grant.
I have a motion to support. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Let me just say that the group that is doing this, has been putting together, has done a number of presentations to the town, including two walks. I've attended those, and it's certainly interesting proposals, great ideas to really enhance some of our tree cover and cool down those hotspots that we have in our downtown area. All right, no further comment. I will call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous.
So it looks like Carl is signing on now.
Ah, Carl is able to sign on.
We're hoping.
We will wait for Mr. Donaldson.
Here we go.
Good evening, Carl. Thank you for staying up late for us this evening. We're moving next to waivers, B 509, The Trails, request for waiver of a side setback on lot 17-26, map 63.
If I could start, so the property owner's here, and we do have something up on the screen to show. So this is a rural density development, so it was approved by the planning board, your special permit, and within the language of the RDD, it gives the planning board the ability to waive setbacks. So although in this case, the standard setback is 10 feet for side yard setback, and in this case, sometimes when they do the original proposal, they'll ask for a waiver upfront for all lots, that was not the case here, it's 10 feet. But again, in this case, the foundation is in, and they can explain what they're doing. I'll just show you, and then we can let the applicant come up. Okay, there we go. So there, it's a 10-foot setback, the foundation's been poured and installed, and what you see here, it's a greater setback than the foundation, just because there'll be an overhang for eaves. So what they're looking for is the board to approve a waiver of setback to 5.9 feet instead of the 10. And I'll just show you, before the applicant gets up, this other plan that we put together just to show you how this relates to the world. So this is their lot, their setback there, and then the abutting lot that it's closest to is undeveloped. And so again, just to kind of put you in, and this is Citation Drive, which is located off of Shippon Road down in South Plymouth. So if you're going down Old Sandwich Road, you take a ride on Shippon Road, and it's there, between there and Route 3. And again, it's a rural density development with a significant amount of open space that was set aside in addition to creating these lots. So with that, I'll turn it over to the property owner.
Please, if you'd step up.
Good evening.
Identify yourself, so we...
My name's Zachary Nygros, I'm the owner of 10 Citation Drive.
Great, thank you. So Mr. Nygros, what do you want to tell us about this?
Well, what I'd like to say is that I'm just seeking relief for the setback minimum, as this gentleman just stated, and the reason being is, we actually had a few different reasons why we ended up where we did with the foundation, which I laid out in my narrative. But in all honesty, I'm happy that I'm here to have the opportunity to ask about, you can see on the plan there regarding the driveway that belongs to my neighbor, and I wanted to take that into consideration. I didn't want to start a big nightmare right off, you know, the beginning of the project. But you can see clearly that their driveway, and what's not shown in this plan is the grading, the, you know, physical terrain, the topography basically. In there, I know, this picture, it looks like the foundation's quite a bit away from that driveway, but in terms of grading and the tree line that I wanted to try to save, which we did actually, we saved quite a bit of it, which is awesome, we ended up a little bit into the setback. And I also, just like I said in my narrative, I just wanted to say that it's just that front corner, you can see how the house itself is not facing 100% parallel to the road to Citation Drive. It's just the tip of the corner of the garage. Should you go back, you know, five or six feet down the foundation wall, we would actually, you know, took that measurement or that dimension there, we would actually be within the setback rule. But I'm just seeking relief so that we can get inspected and continue with the project.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Hartman? I'm going to bring it...
No.
So let me ask, is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak on this matter?
I'm not seeing anyone looking to be recognized. If you did, raise your hand, and I'm not seeing that.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board for questions. Start with Mr. Grandy.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hartman, will you put up the plan again, please?
Local scene, thank you.
And go to the one that shows the neighbors. Zoom in a little bit for me? Okay. Can you go and zoom in a little bit? Can you see where it is now? Okay, up with his foundation toward the north of the... Okay. Who owns, sir, the lot that where that arrow is right now on the screen?
I believe it's Steve Webby, the original developer of the entire neighborhood, which I actually met with him the other day, and my big headache, this is a small thorn in my side as of right now regarding the zoning hearing, my biggest headache is the driveway on the other side, and I asked him, you know, what his thoughts were, how that ended up being the case. I guess here in Plymouth, there's no permitting process regarding driveways, and I guess he, what he said to us was that he had sold the neighbor on the other side, their house, he had sold that lot to them, and then whatever happened from there took place. And in all honesty, I'm just caught between a rock and a hard place because they're very nice people. I didn't plan on, you know, tearing up their driveway or doing anything crazy, they have nice, you know, kids and so on and so forth. I'm trying to be a good neighbor and not encroach too much on their driveway, or smash down all their trees, or their tree line, or privacy, or anything like that. So I, like I said in my narrative, in all honesty, I made the decision to scoot the foundation a little bit towards the lot that Steve Webby owns. He's under the impression that that lot is buildable. I don't know, I've been in the construction business a long time, I don't know if that necessary, in my opinion, I don't think that lot next to me is buildable, especially with that drainage easement. I think that would be, that wouldn't be a battle I'd want to fight, put it that way.
So in your narrative, it says you were aware of the setbacks, but you made the executive decision to move the foundation closer to somebody else's property line.
Well...
Let me continue, please.
Of course.
In the plans that were submitted to build this house, it obviously must have shown the proper setbacks when you received your building permit.
Of course.
Right?
Yes.
So was anybody in the town aware you made the executive decision to move? Obviously, the engineer created your first set of plans, when he doesn't as-built, would immediately become aware that you encroached on a setback. So I'm not a big fan of anybody making an executive decision without making sure you follow the zoning regulations and setbacks that come with, you're allowed to build a home there, yes, but you should be meeting the setbacks that are required. So again, I'm not a fan of post facto situations where, let's just do it and see what the consequences are later. So I'm not too sure how I'm going to go with this at the end of the day. I want to hear from the other planning board members as well.
Sure. With all due respect, Mr. Grandy, it's not like I just figured I was the mayor of the town and wanted to go ahead and just make the decision on my own without consulting or considering anybody. I had a lot of balls to juggle when we were installing the foundation, you know, particularly in terms of the weather, in terms of the schedule, in terms of the contractors, in terms of many things. And on top of that, like I said, the process, I guess, here in Plymouth is a little bit different than what I'm used to. This isn't the first home that I've built. I just did a beautiful house in Marshfield, my hometown, not too far away, where, I guess here in Plymouth, it's different. I can't get the foundation inspection without having the as-built done first. And like I stated in my narrative, you know, any house that anybody builds, it's never exactly where, you know, in reality, in real life, the foundation is never exactly to the inch or to the foot where it's shown, you know, in your proposed plan. You know, there's of course, a little bit of wiggle room, you know, just for the sake of error or reality. And so it's not that I wanted to encroach on the setback or anything like that, it's just that, like I said in my narrative, in that picture, it looks like my lot lines are parallel to each other, but until the engineer comes out and does his survey and does the actual as-built and shoots his points and shoots the grades, there's no way to determine that I'm within three feet or a foot and a half of the setback minimum.
All right. I'm going to beg to differ with you a little bit, I've been in construction for over 40 years...
Okay.
...and done over 100 foundations.
Sure.
We always bring the engineer in to pin the location of the footings and the foundation as we go along with the project. And that's all I'm going to say, I don't even need you to give me a response.
Fair enough.
But that is the process. You're going to build something, you build it where it's supposed to be, and yes, I understand, an inch, two, three inches, that happens.
Sure.
But not four feet, or whatever the number happens to be here. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy.
So if I could, Pac TV, could you, could I, I'm sharing my screen, could you put my screen up, please? So just somebody made the comment about topo. So this is 174, 172, so you do have a knoll at the corner, so the driveway is over here, the house is here, and there is a high knoll where the original proposal was, so it does move it away from that hill, so for what it's worth. Okay. Thank you.
If I may also say, in addition to what this gentleman just said, what's not shown in that drawing is the other half of the driveway, which runs along the top of that knoll. Should I have undermined that, it's sand here in Plymouth, you know what I mean, the fill, the grade, everything's sand here, which is super soft, should I have put the foundation exactly where it was shown, and, which I planned to do anyways, but had I dug into that hillside, there's no way that their driveway would have been safe, or the tree line would have been safe, or anything along those lines. And maybe that's my mistake, maybe I should have, I don't know, reached out to the inspector or reached out to somebody, but I was assuming that I would have been able to get at least the foundation or the footing inspection prior to moving forward. But I guess here in Plymouth, like I said, the process is a little bit different than other towns that I'm familiar with, where you don't actually get that foundation inspection until you've produced the as-built, is the, with the impression that I have. But I fully understand what you're saying, sir. I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just, I stake out a lot of foundations, I'm a surveyor.
Okay.
So I understand, they move a little bit. This is a little more, and I can understand why it happened. And I think that I, question, quick question from Mr. Hartman. So this is a waiver request rather than a variance because it's an open space development? Is that right?
Yes, so if you look at the RDD provisions, it says that the planning board can waive the dimensional requirements. And again, typically, that's done at the beginning of a meeting, but we've done this at Red Brook several times, so...
Okay, so this, we're not advisory to ZBA here?
No, it's your vote, and the quantum of vote, it's not a special permit, so the quantum of vote is three members, but yes, it's your decision to allow for that waiver.
Okay, so I think that, you know, if, under a conventional subdivision, this would be a variance request.
It would be a special permit in Plymouth, a special permit before the ZBA.
Okay. And I know that the criteria, one of those criteria is topography, as well as shape of the land and the soils. In this case, having looked at this and seen the topography, I've been out to that development before, not in this particular case, that you're pretty constrained by the topography.
Absolutely.
I think perhaps your engineer might have done a little tighter topo to really figure out how this was going to go down for you.
Absolutely.
And I think you basically had to make a field change to deal with the topography.
Mm-hmm.
So when you spoke with Mr. Webby, did he have any issue with the setback being reduced to the adjacent lot?
No, not at all. And in all honesty, I guess that's my other avenue to take, is if I had to purchase five feet of land from Mr. Webby and go down that path in order to achieve the setback, I guess I would have to do that. But in all honesty, as just a good old fashioned carpenter, I'm just trying to do the path of least resistance here and take advantage of the beautiful weather and continue with the project.
I understand. So, you know, with agreeing with Mr. Grandy's kind of distaste for post facto approvals, I think that you have, you have a good case here. I think the topography certainly warrants it, looking at the neighbor's driveway. I would suggest you may well consider having them obtain an easement from you. So in the future, should you decide to sell this house, you're not going to have a title problem.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that advice.
Get that on record, and whether who's responsible for it is a question for you to figure out between your neighbor, Mr. Webby, and you. But generally, for those reasons, this is primarily topography, and I think that this is, because it's an open space development, setbacks are variable, they're different in different developments, they're different open space developments. I think I'd be comfortable with approving this. That's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Mann?
Yeah, I shared Mr. Grandy's concern for the manner in which this was proposed and the narrative itself, which seemed to suggest that you knew there was a problem here and you went ahead anyway. And then there's a whole thing, potential thing that can cascade, but as Mr. Hartman says, and Mr. Bennett, there are mitigating circumstances, given the topography and given that this is a rural open space development, that there is other preserved land, we're not crowding things in on top of each other. But I would hope that you would commit to as well, getting something in writing from Mr. Webby, that he doesn't find this to be, it looks to me like a similar lot to yours, I don't know why it wouldn't be buildable, but maybe...
If I may, there's a drainage easement in the middle of that lot, like I said, and it's a pretty steep dive into the center, you know, it's a massive hole in the ground, you know what I mean? Like I said, in terms of physical production, I mean, to the untrained eye, that might look like it's a buildable area, and God bless whoever takes that project on, but like I said, I've been doing this quite a, I know I'm a young guy, but I've been doing it a long time, I don't think I would take that battle on. And if there is a house ever there one day, like I said, God bless them. But I don't think, for a long time, I don't think it would be buildable. And if that was a buildable lot, and that was going to be a prized lot within that neighborhood, I would imagine that Mr. Webby would have built something there to begin with. There's probably a reason why he left it for one of the last lots in the neighborhood to be built upon.
I'm also going to take Mr. Bennett's word, his experience with the lot and the topography, and Mr. Hartman's as well. I wasn't able to get to the lot, so you often do hear people, or traditionally, topography is one of the things that's used for variances or waivers, and this seems to be a clearer case than a lot of them, so...
Of course.
I'm persuaded by that, I think. But again, you know, we hate to approve something that's not gone the proper way up from, in the beginning, and it's kind of, it's a bad example for us, it's hard to pull back in another instance and be more severe on someone, but I guess the circumstances might allow that in this case.
If I, if I may, in my own defense, I just want to make the point clear, it's not like, as you said, it's not like I knew there was an issue and I moved forward without consulting the town or the city or anything along those lines. You know, on, in real life, the movement of two inches is a matter of feet in, you know, real life, in terms of the dimensions. In regards to the stakes, the corners of the foundation, of course, I was given a 10-foot setback, I was given offsets for the corners of the foundation, and in regards to that, you know, I thought, in all honesty, regardless, I figured I still had at least that 10-foot offset with the stakes to the corners of the foundation, you know what I mean? It's not like, and judging by the dimensions, we're only talking about a matter of a few feet. It's not a matter, it's not 30 feet into the setback, then that would be obvious that I just go ahead and ignored the rule and move forward. It was just a case of, you know, I was trying to keep everybody happy, my neighbors in particular, and all while keeping my own project going. And I figured I was, even if I had to adjust the, you know, adjusted maybe a few inches or a foot or so, I figured I'd still be well within that setback, judging by, you know, the plan itself, the site plan. I will say that it is my mistake, I guess I should have consulted with the engineer prior to making that decision, because like I said, at first glance, it's, it looks like those lot lines are parallel, they're not actually, in real life, they actually narrow as they come towards the street. If anything, I would have just pushed the house back five feet and I would have been just fine, but I wasn't on, you know, like I said, in Plymouth here, it's a little bit different process than I'm used to. That as-built is done, and the inspection itself is done, you know, after that as-built's produced. So it's kind of like I have to produce the foundation first and then get the as-built handed into the town here, and like I said, I made an adjustment of about a foot or so, which resulted in three feet on paper. And that's kind of what we're here about today. It's not that I wanted to step on anybody's toes or do things without asking, or, you know, anything along those lines, it's just that I figured, for the sake of not disturbing my neighbors' properties, they're very nice people, I didn't want to kick off World War III at the very beginning of my project, and with it being a vacant lot next to me with a drainage easement in it, I didn't think it would be as consequential as the decision was.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, did you say me, Mr. Donaldson? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Carl.
Okay, all right. So first of all, I think all three of my colleagues so far have covered all the basis on this. I am still kind of on the fence with you guys to how I, which way direction I would go. I am considering, I am taking into consideration the open space aspect of it. I don't know if I just, if I missed it because I had problems logging on, but to the petitioner, how did you come about that you had to come in front of the board, or was it something you just realized trying to get permits or something, or how did we get to where we are now?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear his question at all.
His question was, how did you determine that you needed to come before us after having made the change to the foundation?
Well, I had the as-built done after the foundation was installed, and I had to produce that as-built drawing in order to get to the inspection for the foundation, which is the next hurdle that I'm trying to get over so I can continue building. So therefore, when the surveyor came out and the engineer came out and actually did the as-built, of course, his dimension showed that we were, you know, we had a seven-foot setback at just the tip, just the corner of the garage, rather than obviously the required 10-foot setback. Had I landed right on that 10-foot setback, I wouldn't be here today, but like I said earlier, you know, until that engineer comes out and actually shoots the points and shoots the grades, you know, there's no one inch equals, you know, a few feet on paper. And so like I said, I guess it was just a case of, I don't know what it was a case of, honestly, it was just a case of trying to, like I said, trying to keep everybody happy, trying not to disturb the neighbor's property, trying not to undermine their driveway, trying not to make the job site dangerous. You got to remember, sand is very soft, it's not like in Attleboro, where it's beautiful clay and mud and the soil holds. It was a case of...
Is this, is this the case of, is this your only build that you've done in Plymouth? Have you done other builds before?
No, I haven't done anything else in Plymouth, I've done a few additions in Plymouth, but I haven't done any new homes in Plymouth. But like I said, I just did a beautiful one in Marshfield, my hometown.
All right, thank you. I have no other questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson.
So I was able to pull up on GIS, just one more thing, so if you can, yeah, so this is my share screen, so again, you can see where the house is, but they talked about the drainage, so there is a fairly large drainage easement on that abutting property. So as I said, they would have a pretty tough time trying to get a house there, but just so you can see where their house is, the drainage easement, the drainage for that abutting lot. And let's see how far back is, so you have some area in the back I don't think you could get to, but that's the, the abutting lot with the drainage.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Mr. Smith?
I guess I don't feel that the driveway is a legitimate reason for moving it, it seems like it's gotten close to the property line, which even looking at the more recent plan, that's would probably be where a house would be built. And so, you know, I'm very, very concerned about that. In terms of the relationship that you may or may not have with the neighbor, I also think that's just very much a separate issue and unrelated to this. And I do, however, think that Mr. Bennett's comments about lot lines in this kind of development is something worth considering, but as I said, I think coming, coming back after the fact is, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough approval. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
So obviously, you're developing this property for sale, correct?
Of course.
So when you did your initial layout, what was the setback from where it was cited?
I believe we had represented 14 or 15 feet, if I recall.
Okay, so you ended up moving the setback from 14 or 15 feet down to approximately six feet with the overhang?
It's not that I moved it, it's that, that's where, you know, where the foundation ended up. In terms of, you know, on paper, I hate to be super, I don't know, unprofessional, but in all honesty, I deal with this kind of thing every day. On paper, I understand how it looks so simple and easy, but in real life, given the circumstances regarding the materials, the earth, the drive... regarding the materials, the earth, the driveway, the tree line, so on and so forth, I had, I, it's, it's a case of, had I had produced exactly what was drawn in the proposed plan, I would have more or less undermined the neighbors' driveway and made their property unsafe. Also, I would have had to have wiped out all of their tree line. In addition to that, the house itself, my foundation, would be very close, like almost four feet away from their driveway, on their lot, not the portion that's shown on my lot. I'm going to ask you gentlemen, hopefully in five minutes, what you would do regarding that piece of their driveway, and hopefully you guys can give me some good advice. But in addition to that, you know, like I said, it was a case of, I understand what was proposed, but at the same time, it was a case of, you know, had I had gone down that road and put it exactly where it was shown in the drawing, which, by the way, I understand you guys, some of you guys, gentlemen, are in the construction business, it is not out of the ordinary to move portions of the building in order to keep things safe and secure and reasonable.
No, of course not. Field changes happen, but at the same time, they're done with the understanding that as you're making moves within a lot, you still have to comply with the zoning requirements.
Of course.
And so, again, my question, as we, as I started, was to say, okay, you, you made a field change based upon the conditions as you saw them...
Yes.
When you dug, I'm assuming, to start your foundations and said, well, wait a minute, this is going to be a challenge with respect to my neighbors, and so I'm going to actually recite the foundation. But the process that we as a board have to look at as we consider this is, okay, you've made that determination, the next step is, why didn't you say, all right, before we go ahead and pour, let's make sure we're in the right place as we go forward, and if not, let's ask for relief before we go ahead and do that?
Sure.
And the concern that we have is not for your willingness to be accommodating for your neighbors, we appreciate that, but this board also understands that you're building something to sell it.
Sure.
You have a schedule, you want, and time is money.
Of course.
And so, we also get people who come before us, who in essence say, I'd rather beg for forgiveness than ask for permission, and that is not something this board is particularly fond of.
Understandable.
So, we're, to some degree, trying to understand what your mindset was, especially when you have a narrative provided to us where it says, I made a decision to move this building. And again, not that that's an unusual circumstance, but we're trying to understand why things didn't go the way they're supposed to go in Plymouth when you go ahead and get your, your permitting. Because as you say, okay, I, you expected to get your, your, once you put the as-built in, you expected to get the foundation signed off on...
Of course.
And to then proceed with the, I assume, framing.
Of course.
And you're not getting that foundation signed off on right now. So that's why you're before us.
Yes. If I can say, sir, in all honesty, what I was thinking was, it was 100 degrees out, I have the form guys lined up, I have five other projects going on for my construction business, I'm young and ambitious, and I was trying to take advantage of the good weather and not waste two and a half months with zoning hearings and so on and so forth. Not that I wouldn't want to. This courthouse and this room, honestly, is beautiful, and I'm disappointed that in the city of Marshfield, we don't have anything like this. And I regret not wearing my powdered wig and my buck, you know, buckle shoes and such, because this is awesome, and I'm thrilled, I think this is an awesome thing. It's not a case of, like I said, I don't want to, put it this way, I'm not the million-dollar man, I'm not Mr. trying to beat the board and the planning board. It was just a case of, I had everything lined up, it was 100 degrees out, we were trying to get the job done. We had a 10-foot offset stake for the corner of the foundation and the garage itself, which I had figured in my head, I mean, not that I'm a surveyor, but I assumed, should I shift the foundation, maybe even two feet, three feet, five feet, all 10 feet up to that setback stake, that I still would have that 10-foot minimum setback in my pocket. But, like I said, I guess a matter of one foot equals four feet on paper because of the lot lines narrowing as they come towards the street. You know what I mean? It was, had I known or had I felt like I should have had the engineer come out before I have the as-built done, or at least before we install the footing and the foundation, I would have just said, hey, let's push the house back 10 feet and never have this issue. I didn't, in my professional opinion, honestly, I didn't think I needed to do that, but here I am before the board, and clearly, that was, that was the only mistake, I guess, that I made.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
Anything further from members of the board? Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just, just a few things I wanted to mention here is, one, just to kind of put it on the record, that requirement for the foundation as-built before you get your, before you're allowed to put wood on the foundation, is for this very reason.
Of course.
Because, imagine, had you had the place framed, and now what kind of jeopardy are you in? You know, you're a lot deeper into the project. So, and I, I suggest that probably on that 100-degree day, a phone call to the engineer, hey, how far over can I slide this thing? Engineer's going to pull it up in CAD, say, okay, you can pull it over 3.2 feet and still be okay. So, future reference, I think that would be, have been the better way to go, but that's hindsight, right?
Yes.
And, and looking behind us just gets us a stiff neck, so, where we're going forward, I think that, should, should we not grant this, right? Your recourse is then going to be purchase, obtain somehow a slice from Mr. Webby to change the lot line.
Potentially.
Right, that, I mean, I think that's the most logical progression, should you not get the, the waiver here, then, because this foundation is in place and it's probably not going to move, right? There's, you're going to find a way to make this work.
Yeah, I'd rather it not move, in all honesty, and I'd rather not tear down my brand-new work, or at least, you know, a foot each direction of my brand-new work, or put a weird clipped corner or something that would be out of the ordinary. I'd rather not do that.
I understand. So, so, you know, to what end would we not grant this waiver? And basically, what we don't want to do is, and I don't even know if it's right to, it's okay to say the word precedent in here, but as, as Mr. Mann had said, it makes it difficult for us to basically enforce the rules when the attitude is, well, I'm just going to do it and ask forgiveness. And I understand, you know, we've discussed it enough. Having seen the topography out there, I'm, actually, I think, Googler, Street View and Terrain Marking, that's a tight spot, and the neighbors' driveway really couldn't go anywhere else, they're kind of hugging the side of a hill to get, to get from their house to the street. You know, it may well have been incumbent on the developers to rearrange that some. However, the problem with that is they're going to destroy all the vegetation out there.
Absolutely.
And I commend you for thinking of that, whether you thought of it at the time or when you wrote your narrative...
Of course, of course.
To protect some of the vegetation there, the trees and the, and the precious sand. So, I think that I'm, I'm still in favor of this, and, and I think, I guess I would exhort my colleagues here to consider, to what end are we, would we not grant this? I think it's, that is why we have the power to grant waivers and, for things like this. Mistakes happen, it's understood. So, I think that this house is going to stay where it is, no matter what we do here tonight. It's just a matter of how much money do we make this gentleman spent to, to correct it?
My, my big thing, if I may say, my big thing is the time. I work year after year in 10-degree weather. You know, most of my work, a lot of my projects are done during the winter time. It is beautiful out and it is perfect working weather, let's say that, and I'd rather, you know, take whatever path. To me, it's not a question about money, it's whichever path is going to be the least amount of time of my time and your time wasted, in all honesty. I just want to continue with the project. And if I could also suggest, on, based on everything that you just said, should I have had a footing inspection, or maybe in regards to that as-built scenario, at that footing inspection, which is usually the case in pretty much every other town that I've ever worked in, I feel like if I had gotten that as-built done, maybe at that footing inspection or just prior to the footing inspection, something along those lines, I would have at least realized, hey, it's just the footing, it's only a tiny amount of concrete, it's not the entire foundation wall. You know what I mean? But I guess here in Plymouth, like I said, it's a different, even to me, it's a new thing, that I guess here, you don't get that foundation inspection until after the as-built itself is actually done, which obviously means that the foundation has to be installed in order for that as-built to be done.
Right.
So, therefore, it's like a chain of events where, like I said, it's not like I'm the expert and everybody else doesn't know what they're talking about, it was just a case of, I was under the impression that either way, no matter what, I was still going to achieve that minimum 10-foot setback. But I guess in reality, you know, after the as-belt was done and the points were shot, because of those narrowing lot lines, unfortunately, I was, you know, three feet into that setback. And I understand everything that you gentlemen are saying about precedent, and if you do it for me, you're going to have to do it for everybody else. I fully understand that. It's, like I said, it's not like I was trying to circumvent the city or make an example of, hey, I think I can get away with this, or anything along those lines. It was just a case of, I was trying to juggle, you know, a few different balls at the same time without raising a giant stink over my neighbor who's already been living there for, you know, 20 years probably, or whatever it may be. And I just want to say on that note as well, I don't believe Mr. Webby produced that house for them. I think he sold the lot to my neighbors, and then they had another guy, probably like myself, another guy, actually not as sharp as myself, maybe not, because he came in and just put the driveway straight across my lawn, as you can see in that picture that we put up.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Grandy.
Okay, so, we can go around in circles, you've already said it at least a half a dozen times...
Of course.
The same thing. Is there a way that we can get a certified letter from Mr. Webby saying he is okay with this plan and this setback, as stated on this plan?
Well, you can ask for that, and we can put this on a future agenda if that's what you'd like.
That would be the way I would lean. I mean, I understand, you're in business, you're juggling a lot of things, I juggle a lot of things in the construction business too.
Of course.
Okay? So, when the engineers came out, they, did you have the, I don't, I'm just going to say, usually you have the engineers at least set the footing, of course, pin the corners, and they give you a little layout line, and you follow that. And then, if you're smart, which most developers are, and apparently you're a developer, they bring the engineer back to pin the location of the founding on the footing itself, so that you can't miss. The engineers laid this out, I didn't lay this out, so I'm good to go. But during the footing digging, you may run into a situation of a little bit of ledge...
Yes.
The gradient is, is too high and you don't want to cut into the hill, or whatever the case may be. The first thing that's done is, you call the engineer and say, how much can I move this, can I move this? Can you come out here tomorrow real quick, let's go over this, what is the process? Right? You say Plymouth is a little different, I don't build things in Plymouth, I'm in Hingham, Marshfield, that area, situate, in most building situations, they do ask for an as-built, of course, right? So now you're sitting there with a foundation that's not even backfilled at this point?
Yes.
Or it is backfilled?
No, I'd love to backfill it, to be honest with you.
It's not backfilled. So you're sitting there with a site, you haven't even got a, did you get a damp roofing inspection on it?
So I have to get past this hearing that we're at today before I can get the inspector out there?
You just have T-wall standing up right now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, to me, and I would suggest, and this is how I would vote to support it, is if we require a letter from Mr. Webby, has been given a stamp set of these plans signed, and he's okay with this setback as it is submitted to us this evening.
Sure, I have a great relationship with him. He was out there the other day.
Otherwise, otherwise, I'm not voting to approve this, I will vote against it. That's my own personal opinion.
Understood.
So you could vote to grant the waiver, subject to having a letter from the abutter, or we could put this on in a couple weeks. Those would be like two, so I don't, if you say you vote to allow the waiver, subject to them providing a letter of support from the abutter, I think that's just as good, or you can say, or we can just schedule this in two more weeks.
That's what I, that's what I wanted, a minimum, a letter, whether it's through that process, we get it approved tonight, that's fine with me. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate that, Mr. Grandy. Steve, I must say, he was, he was literally out there a few days ago with us, not in regards to the foundation, of course, we did discuss that, and I could get you a letter if need be. He didn't seem to have any issue with that. What he was specifically out there for was in relation to the driveway on the other side, and it feels like we're coming to the close here on my portion of this hearing. But before I sit down, I'd love to ask you gentlemen, because I've consulted with everybody else, attorneys, neighbors, other builders, Steve, I've consulted with everybody, I'm curious, if any one of you gentlemen had that situation on your lot, what would be the remedy? I'm curious, what, what do you, what would you think you would do with that driveway? Leave it, get an easement, get rid of it?
I think we would be happy to discuss that with you after the hearing tonight, yes.
Privately, I know we're on TV here.
We're, we're not, we're not going to give you legal advice.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it. I just have asked everybody but the city officials themselves, and I'm, I'd be curious what, especially a longtime builder, you know, somebody and, you know, surveyor, people with real actual experience and knowledge, not just opinions.
Sure.
I'd be curious what their thoughts would be.
Okay. Mr. Grandy, do you have a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Donaldson, do you want to say anything further?
No, I was, I was just saying, I was ready to take a motion, and I'm leading with Mr. Grandy and, and his aspects of a letter from Mr. Webby and that lot. My, my concerns is not just what we vote on in regards to the builder, but the implications for the, for whoever's going to buy that property.
Okay, so, as Mr. Grandy, as you raised the, the issue, why don't I ask you to frame your motion?
Okay, through the chair, I'll make a motion to recommend the new setback...
Well, it'd be to approve the setback.
To approve the setback, with the prerequisite that he has to supply a letter from the abutting owner, Mr. Webby, certified stamped that he has received this set of plans and has no problems or issues with the setbacks.
And to, and to make it clear on that motion, if it does, if it passes and we don't get the letter, he does not get the waiver, so just to make that clear...
That's correct.
For the record.
Understood.
That's correct.
Okay, so we have that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grandy, second by Mr. Bennett, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll do the roll call vote. Mr. Smith, if you had a vote in this?
I approve.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Donaldson.
I'm a no.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Grandy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So, you have your approval, subject to getting a letter from Mr. Webby, submitted to the planning department in a short period of time.
Absolutely.
And I know you're going to want to do that as quickly as possible.
I'm itching to start banging nails, absolutely.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before I sit down, I just want to say, it's been nothing but a pleasure, despite what we're doing here today, it's been nothing but a pleasure dealing with the town of Plymouth. You guys are awesome, and everybody's been very, very helpful. This nice lady right here, she was awesome, helping me jump through all the hula hoops to get to where I'm at right now, in particular, and this gentleman as well. And so, I don't know, keep up the good work. From a young builder's standpoint, let me tell you guys, you're doing a great job. Other towns, you guys know on the South Shore could be super difficult, but Plymouth has been awesome, I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening, we have announcements. We have several events scheduled for tomorrow, July 10th. First, there's the Third Annual Garden Tour and Sustainability Fair at the Plymouth Library on South Street. Sustainability Fair runs from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and the gardens are open for viewing from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. There is a fee for the gardens tour, and tickets are available online at PPLFDN.org. Next, the Open Space Committee and Land Use and Acquisition Committee will be holding a joint meeting also at the Public Library. That meeting is at 4:00 PM. And Precinct 3 will be holding its monthly caucus at 6:00 PM at the School Administration Building. On July 21, the Wastewater Management Plan Citizens Advisory Committee will be meeting at 6:00 PM in the, in the rope walk room here at Town Hall. Are there any further announcements from members of the board? Seeing none, we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which are our committee... Seeing none, we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which are our committee appointments. Uh, we're gonna start first with the Cedarville Steering Committee. Patrice O'Connor?
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. So briefly, can you tell us why it is you want to be on the Steering Committee?
Well, I am a longtime Plymouth resident, and I've lived in Cedarville for over 30 years. I've seen a lot of changes, like most longtime residents, and I just really would like a voice in the direction that Cedarville is heading, for both businesses and residents.
Okay. And what is your understanding as to the role that you'd be stepping into on the Cedarville Steering Committee?
That's a great question. I'm not quite sure. I'm here to learn. Um, Jody Burkett was the one that suggested that I apply for this position, and, um, I'm not really quite sure. I'm looking forward to the first meeting. I've been given the notes from past meetings and the agenda for the future one. I've read them both, and looking forward to understanding the process.
Great. Let me open up to questions from members of the board. Uh, Mr. Donaldson?
I, I don't ask shit on any questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Uh, Mr. Grandy?
Through the chair, I have no questions, and thank you for applying.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Mand?
Do you have any specific issues that have been a motivating factor in your interest?
Sand mining.
Can you elaborate? What do you mean by sand mining?
Well, the sand mining issue on Hedges Pond Road is a concern for me. I know it's already in motion, but yes, I'm very concerned about that, and the long-term effects on the aquifer and the area, the aesthetics, all of it.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
No questions, other than thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to recommend that Patrice O'Connor to the Steering, the Cedarville Steering Committee.
I have a motion for recommend, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Call the roll. Uh, Mr. Donaldson?
No.
Mr. Grandy?
Yes.
Mr. Mand?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, do you have a vote?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The candidate for the Plymouth Center Steering Committee has withdrawn, so we'll move next to the Land Use and Acquisition Committee. Uh, and for people's edification, the Land Use and Acquisition Committee, often referred to as LUAC, is established by town charter, consists of seven members appointed by the Planning Board, Select Board, Conservation Commission, Open Space Committee, and Agricultural Commission. Its purpose is to act in an advisory capacity to the Select Board with respect to acquisition by the town of land pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 61, and review of such other parcels as may be requested by the town. So we have a number of candidates. First, we have Edward Carl.
Good evening. My name's Eddie Carl. I, I appreciate, uh, you folks being here and listening to, uh, what I have to say about, uh, being involved as volunteer, uh, in this particular committee. Um, I, I've lived in Plymouth over 36 years. Um, I, when I first came to Plymouth, I sat on the Finance and Advisory Committee for a couple of years. I sat on the Zoning Board of Appeals for a couple of years, um, town meeting for a few years, the DPW Building Committee. So I have, uh, I have a long history, uh, earlier when I first moved to town, um, and I've kept involved with a lot of different projects. I worked on the, uh, Lawring Library project down in, uh, North Plymouth, next to, uh, Zion Lutheran Church. I'm presently working on a, a project at the library, uh, the Ed Santos Community Garden. Um, we just, uh, took down the trees, and we're getting ready to put in a pad, and, um, got all the approvals, and, uh, everything seems to be moving along there pretty well. So longtime volunteer. Um, my background, uh, uh, I am a master electrician by trade. I had my own business for about 30 years. Um, and then I became a vocational high school teacher. I taught at, uh, South Shore Votech for 10 years, Southeastern Vocational Regional. I retired and then, uh, got dragged back into service, uh, this past year for Old Colony Vocational, um, uh, High School, teaching, uh, electricity. Um, so, you know, I have a, I, I have a long history in this community. I think I have, uh, a lot of different experiences, sitting on committees and, and boards, uh, and, and just, I, I, I love Plymouth, and I'm, I, I've recently moved to, uh, a, a property on River Street. I've had four different homes in this town, so I've lived in every corner, from White Horse Beach to South Plymouth. Now, I'm, I'm closer to town, where I actually really, uh, really like being, listening to the church bells at this, at the little church, and being able to go over to Bram Halls and have an ice cream. It's a pretty good deal. Anyways, um, I, I would appreciate your, uh, your, uh, time and consideration, and, uh, hopefully I'll be able to fulfill the role here, um, that, that, that's needed. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, questions from members of the board? Mr. Mand?
No questions.
Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Mr. Donaldson?
Uh, yes, just one question. What do you feel is one of the major concerns or issues, um, that you'll be facing, uh, when you're on the, when you're on the committee?
I, I guess, looking at the, at Plymouth as a whole now, and watching what has occurred over the last 36 years, development-wise, town-wise, uh, property-wise, Chapter 60, Chapter 61 properties becoming available, um, I, I guess, more what's gonna be, um, beneficial to the, to, um, people in Plymouth rather than individuals. Um, and, and I don't see any particular issue right, right in front of me.
Um, I, I know that there are good reasons to have a committee like this, um, and I understand property rights as well. Um, so, uh, I, I just think I, from my, my experiences in, in real life, and, and through business, and through committees, I have, have a good understanding on how things work in Plymouth. And, and, and I love this town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy?
Through the chair, I have no questions, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, just one, one question is, uh, so you've been a Plymouth resident for coming up, getting close to 40 years or so, is that right?
Well, 36. I don't wanna push it. I'm still only 24 and a half.
So how did you become a scout leader of Troop 62 in Duxbury?
What, what is it?
How did you become a, a scout?
Uh, my son. My, my son from a former, uh, marriage.
I see.
And I was, I was also a duck, I was a, a leader at, uh, Troop 62. I, I still am. I just did my youth protection training today. Uh, 27 years, two-time, um, National Jamboree Scout Master. Um, I took approximately 50 kids to camp every year for about five or six years when, when the troop was. We had, we had 100 kids in that troop, and I helped 47 kids make Eagle.
That's terrific. I, I only ask because we, we could use a...
So I am, you know, I am a volunteer.
I see that.
Can, can I serve a purpose? Yeah, I, I think God put me on this earth to do something.
Thank, thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Thanks very much. Next, we have Eric Parent. Is Eric present on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Not on Zoom.
Okay.
On Zoom.
On Zoom.
I'm here on Zoom.
You're here on Zoom, and Joan is, Joan is seeking reappointment, so Joan is, is on the LUAC Committee at the moment. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, well, on Zoom.
Thank you for, for appearing on Zoom. So why don't you tell us why you'd like to be reappointed?
Well, a, as you said, it's a reappointment. I think we, this committee has been really working to get a process together. Um, I don't think we really had one, and we, we initiated our meetings and to get a process together, to see how we're gonna review the properties that are coming up off of Chapter 61. Um, I think we, we proceeded in developing a memorandum style, a style to give advice to the selectmen, and I'd like to see, you know, go through to see how it goes through, um, and how it works. We've also had, through the charter change, we've had our authority expanded, and, um, so we're gonna look at other properties now versus just Chapter 61 properties. Um, you know, my background is, is an attorney. I've represented many, you know, municipalities. I've also represented developers on the other side, so I feel like my background works with this, and hopefully it's been an assist and a help to the committee, um, so far. But I really think that, you know, since our authority's been expanded by the charter, and, you know, we've really started the process going forward, we're, we're comfortable now starting to review the properties and hopefully give, you know, good advice to the selectmen. I would like to continue on the, on the commi, on the committee and see it through.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to questions. Mr. Bennett?
Uh, no questions, but same, same, uh, comment that thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Uh, no questions, and, and again, thank you very much.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Grandy?
Through the chair. No questions, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mand?
Uh, Ms. Langsum, um, this seems to be a period that we're going through where there's a lot of interest in the, in issues, at least tangentially and often directly related to LUAC and their work. Can you speak to that to, to, to any degree?
Well, I think that's what, what I was discussing, is that I don't think the committee was doing that much until probably about two years ago, there was a concerted effort to get us really active and to start really reviewing properties. Um, I think it was slow at the beginning because not many properties were coming out of Chapter 60, but I think that gave us time to develop, uh, you know, procedures and how we were gonna proceed, you know, proceed with these properties, what our review is going to consist of, and, um, I, as I said, I think we're getting there, and now we see more, more parcels coming up that are coming out of Chapter 61. So, you know, I think our work is gonna increase, which is good, because, that's why we volunteer, to help, and I think hopefully, you know, we'll be giving good advice, um, to the selectmen who, I know, I think they, you know, find that as a big assist in reviewing what properties, what's the best use, whether it be affordable housing, whether the town should buy, whether it should be conservation, whether we just let the developer proceed with the development, and all the issues, you know, contingent on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson?
Hi. I have no questions at this time. Thank you very much for volunteering, and appreciate the, uh, time that you've already served.
Thank you. I have no questions for you as well, so thank you very much. Uh, we have, Justin Fosdick has withdrawn his application, and so, uh, last, we have Mark Denish.
My name is Mark Denish. I'm, uh, uh, this month, we're celebrating our eighth, uh, anniversary of moving to Plymouth, and we're delighted to be here. Uh, my background is, uh, in the pharmaceutical biotech industry, where I've spent, uh, almost 40 years now, uh, primarily in finance and business development roles, including mergers and acquisitions, patent disputes, licensing, those sorts of things, transaction work. And now I'm, uh, president of a very small consulting operation, which simply won, that's me. I have, uh, and I also serve as a, a board, on the board of a nonprofit animal shelter. And the reason for my interest is, um, I have time to devote back to the community. I think it's time that every person at some point in their life realizes that it's time to give back, and I've come to that realization, and I, I read the, uh, the background on this committee, and it interests me. Um, I don't know much about the issues that are before the committee today, but I understand the purpose and the goals, to preserve open space, uh, and not only for the current generation, but for future generations, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mand?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Grandy?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson?
Uh, no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Bennett?
Only to, uh, comment that I agree with and appreciate you, you put that quite well, that we all have a, a responsibility to give back to the community, and I applaud you for stepping up. Thank you.
I have no questions either. Thank you, Mr. Denish.
Thank you.
So those are our candidates. Uh, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go through the candidates in order as they appeared. Uh, if the candidate, if there's one seat open, so as soon as a candidate has a majority of the board members, then we are done. And that will be the appointee. So I'm gonna start, and I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, I'll start for Edward Carl. Roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Smith, if you had a vote?
Uh, no.
Mr. Donaldson?
No.
Mr. Mand?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Grandy?
Unfortunately, no.
And myself, the same, no. Moving next to Joan Langsum. Mr. Smith, if you had a vote?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Mand?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Grandy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's a majority, it is unanimous by the board, so, uh, Ms. Langsum, you have been reappointed to the Land Use and Acquisition Committee for another three-year term.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna take something a little out of order here in one sense. Mr. Carl, I understand that you are living now in the Plymouth Center area and have expressed a separate interest in possibly joining the Plymouth Center Steering Committee. Is that correct?
I'm willing to do whatever you need.
Okay. As we have now twice been without a candidate for the Plymouth Center Steering Committee, and as Mr. Carl has graciously been volunteered, uh, I...
Nomination?
I am going to ask for a nomination for Mr. Carl for the Plymouth Center Steering Committee.
So may.
A second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bennett, a second by Mr. Donaldson. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the roll. Mr. Smith, if you had a vote? Mr. Smith, if you had a vote?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Grandy?
That would be four yeses.
Make it, make it five, plus Mr., Mr. Smith, congratulations, you've been appointed to the Plymouth Center Steering Committee. Please make sure you get sworn in.
Thank you so much.
And next, we're moving to the Open Space Committee. There are two positions on the Open Space Committee, both three-year terms. Again, going through everyone, I'm going to start with Delia Byrne.
Hello, that's me. Nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you. Thank you for zooming in with us this evening.
No problem.
Why don't you tell us why you're interested in the Open Space Committee?
Yeah, so I've been living in town since 2022. I absolutely love it here and I've been taking advantage of the town's open spaces. I've been walking in the parks, I've been doing the recreational areas, enjoying the beaches, and it's really struck me how Plymouth is one of the most beautiful places I've ever lived. And I recently, I become a member of Sustainable Plymouth, I'm also a member of the League of Women Voters, and I was discussing this with someone, I was discussing my love for the open spaces with someone and they recommended I join. I would love to be a part of a board and be able to help the town. So I've already been to a few of the open space meetings and I'm very interested in joining, and so I put my application in.
Great, thank you so much. I'm going to open up to questions for members of the board. Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Delia. Could you maybe cite your favorite place in town, open space, and how you utilize it?
Sure. My favorite place in town is probably the Manamet Point. I'm, if I'm sure you're familiar, it's where the bird sanctuary is. One of my jobs is I'm a dog walker, so I spend a lot of time walking the paths behind Plymouth, and I was able to discover that one day. And walking up the hill and seeing that vista before me was just incredible. It was not something I expected to be able to see, and I think I took about 50 photos and showed it to my mom and she was like, wow. I was not expecting that to come from Plymouth because you don't, I don't think people know enough about how beautiful Plymouth can be, especially for me who came from out of state.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Hi, Delia. Is there a particular issue that you are interested in?
I would like to have more open spaces. I know I saw something recently about cleaning up the parks in our town. I know we're doing a huge push for downtown, trying to plant more trees, trying to improve the spaces. Obviously, that's something I'm a big fan of. I think there's a few parks in the area that could use a bit of a brush up, become more welcoming, and it would welcome people from the town as well as tourism, which I know, and, you know, other kinds of money-making, people who bring in money. So that's something I'm interested in and I know I want to make the town more beautiful, to be more welcoming to both citizens and outsiders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson?
What do you think, what do you can, what would you say your role is as a member on the Open Space Committee?
It is finding, finding open spaces, places in the town, and it would be locating the best places to beautify. I know that we often work with Sustainable Plymouth because I've, like I said, I've been to some of the meetings for that. So it's keeping things opening, welcoming and friendly and sprucing up places around town while also being environmentally aware.
Thank you. No other questions, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy?
Thank you, no questions.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hunter Young.
Thank you for taking me into consideration, I'm happy to be here.
Great. Can you tell us a little bit about why you're interested in the Open Space Committee?
Yeah, I really, I ran for office twice here in Plymouth and I want to serve the town in any way that I can, so I saw that there was a position available for the Open Space Committee. And I'm blessed enough to, my backyard is, my backyard is basically open space, I live on a pond, and I'm very, very grateful for that and the work that people in the past have done to preserve that. And I'm 20 years old, so I want to bring a perspective of somebody. I planned to be in Plymouth my whole life, I've been here my whole life, and I want to make sure that the open space is preserved and kept the way it is and expanded if we can do that, because I think that's what makes Plymouth unique, unique and beautiful. So I'm looking forward to, to serving hopefully, so.
Great, thanks. I'll bring that to the board for questions. Mr. Grandy?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson?
Have you served any other committees or boards before?
I have not, not been on any boards before, no.
Have you ever attended any Open Space Committee meetings?
I have attended a couple online, I think, but I've never been on one in person.
Okay, thank you very much. No other questions, Chair?
Thank you. Mr. Mann?
So Hunter, do you have a specific open space issue or area that you have a particular interest in?
Yeah, I think the Plymouth 1600 area is very, very interesting. That's like five or seven minutes from my, my house. I think it's going to be very challenging deciding what to do with that. There's a lot of competing interests and I'm glad that the town did a lot of work to make sure that the community's voice was heard, but I always think we can do that more. And I hope to be a voice for the people in Plymouth and go talk to people and meet people and hear what they have to say. So that area in particular is, is interesting to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Mr. Bennett?
No questions.
I have no questions either. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Liz Tracy.
Hi. So I had a short speech that I planned, but I'm really bad at writing short speeches, so I'm just going to do the one that I did originally. I don't know if you guys all read it, but it kind of summed me up pretty perfect, so I kind of would like to read it again if you wouldn't mind. So to begin with, I was born and raised in Plymouth, it's my hometown, I love it. As a little girl, my grandfather inspired me, he was my role model. He was one of the original founders of the Plymouth Conservation Committee. I had recently learned that he was the first chair too. His name was Don Tracy, he was the best grandfather I could ever have asked, wished for. While I was growing up, he taught me to respect our environment, to care for what we put into it and take out, it matters. He read me the book, The Giving Tree, by Shel Silverstein, which became the backbone for my love for nature. If we take it all, that's it, there's nothing more left. That spoke volumes to me, a world without trees broke my heart. What my grandfather taught me that the book did not is that we can help our environment before it's too late. When my grandpa was retired from the Conservation Commission, that didn't stop him from taking my brother and I to help clean our local ponds and conservation lands. I can remember going around to the ponds in his canoe to clean the pond greets, pick up trash and pull up the old fishing lines. He said we need to keep our ponds unhealthy and clean so our wildlifes, flora and fauna and residents can enjoy. We loved helping, some of my best childhood memories. I learned so much from him. He didn't have to go around doing this as it wasn't his responsibility anymore, but he knew what he was doing. He wanted to instill a sense of pride and stewardship in our lands, so us would learn respect for the lands that we are so lucky to live in. He'd always say, it doesn't get any better than this, and he was right. As he looked around at all the beauty and he pointed out the interesting facts about the plants, animals, et cetera, he was teaching us to love where we live and respect it. Fast forward to today and my love for the environment has only grown. I became a photographer about 10 years ago. I spent countless hours upon hours photographing nature. I'd find something I didn't know, I'd photograph and research what it was, learn everything about it. I do this all the time. If I don't know what something is, I know I'm about to. What I did realize over time is that our ecoregion is full of invasive species, and our native species are being pushed out and replaced by non-native imported plants, insects, animals, diseases, viruses, that have wreaked havoc on our ecosystem. The thing is, we can still help replenish it with natives and remove the invasives, invasives, excuse me. Bring it back to its original native beauty, there's still time. Our ecoregion is the Atlantic coast of Pine Barrens, one of the rarest ecosystems in the world. It has sadly decreased by 60 to 70% in the past 50 years. All I know is that we have to help it, preserving what is left is so important for its survival. I am also an avid gardener, so I'm passionate about our native plants. And of this season, I've added close to 90 species of native plants to my garden. My dream is a native plant nursery seed bank so I can provide native plants that will benefit our rare ecoregion. I've studied in depth about the native and invasive species, I've educated myself every chance I can get. I feel that my knowledge of the ecoregion and the native and invasive species will be beneficial to help aid in strategically planning and preserving for our open space. I would love to be part of this special group to help so our current and future generations can continue to enjoy the beautiful piece of heaven that we have here. We owe it to them to protect it so they can enjoy it as well. We have such a beautiful, special little piece in this world.
Thank you very much. Let me, no, no, hang on.
I still got to stay up.
I know, I know, I know you want to run for the hills, but no, we, we, let's just see, maybe somebody might have a question, I don't know. We'll give it a try. Mr. Bennett?
Well, I think you covered it, but if you could just kind of fill us in with, again, same question as Mr. Mann asked, is, is there a particular issue or a particular place in Plymouth that you're most interested in?
Yeah, when, when you see open space, there's, how do I put it? I, it drives me crazy when I drive through, I know every name of basically every plant that you look at it. You know, any open space, when you walk through and you see a ton of invasive species and just a little bit of our native species there, Japanese knotweed, that's just filling our lands and our roads and there's, there's, there's a lot of things that we need to do to change what we do to our lands. And I feel that I, I've learned a lot and it really breaks my heart when I go to different places and different conservation areas and I walk through and I'm like, well, that English guy was going to climb up that tree and it's going to ruin that tree someday, but yet there it is on the side of one of our town buildings, or, you know, it's not getting pulled down. And I truly just feel that more education and I feel that I've educated myself an awful lot about these because I don't want to put the invasives and the things that are going to hurt our environment for the future because all of our wildlife that, and what makes our area beautiful out there is getting taken over and slowly replaced by things that don't belong here. And it's important, it really is, because people tomorrow are going to look back and be like, why'd they remove all these trees? Why didn't they plant something that was native to us? Because you think about it, you go to Japan and you go to other places, you expect to see their plants. What we do is we bring them here and we're getting rid of everything that is special to us. So I, I, I think with our open space, we need to focus on more of what makes Plymouth beautiful, and that is our native plants and our native trees and making it beautiful for our future generations to walk through and preserve it. We owe it to them, we really do, we can't just keep destroying everything.
Thank you, Liz.
Mr. Donaldson? Carl, any questions?
Sorry?
Any questions? We'll come back to Carl. Mr. Grandy?
Hi there.
Hi.
That was quite a little letter you read.
I know, I'm not good. It was longer. It was, it was longer. I stopped.
So who, how did you become interested? I know you're in this echo field, someone must have brought it to your attention, how did you decide now is the time?
Actually, it was Andrea Dickinson. She, she was the one that mentioned it to me and she said that I think you'd be good for her. And I looked into it and I was, I thought about conservation, but I know they travel to about 400 different properties per year and it's an awful lot of traveling and with work and gardening and making sure my own yard and garden is being replenished, it's building my native plant nursery, it's been a, it would be a lot to do. So when she said open space, it meets a couple times a month and there's a few things that we do and it's right up my alley for exactly what I'm passionate about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mann?
You've said quite a lot and very impressive passion. So give me your favorite flower, native flower.
Native flower. Um, let's see. One of my favorites, I do love the black-eyed Susan. I think the brown-eyed Susan as well. Um, let's see, what else? I'm not good, this is why I had to write everything down.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Joe pie weed, love Joe pie weed. I love milkweed.
Thank you.
Grapeful Lululelia is really nice. I could keep going.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
How familiar are you with the, with the work and issues that face the Open Space Committee now?
I'm willing to learn whatever they are. I just know that we need to preserve our open space and I'll listen and learn and whatever I need to learn, I'll just read up on it and I'll learn it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donaldson, any questions?
I don't think I have any questions, I just want to say I can, I can feel the passion from her all the way over here in Germany. So I thank you for applying and I appreciate, you know, your, your letter and your words and you wanting to be a member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michaela De Kindern. Not present. Next, we have Samantha Nichols. Not present. And finally, we have candidate for reappointment, Stephanie Silva. Hi, Stephanie.
Hi, everybody. First of all, I want to thank you for appointing me in the first place. For the last three years has been probably the most wonderful experience in my life. I'm a lifelong resident of Plymouth and I grew up, you know, hiking, fishing, going out to Long Beach with my family. So I was really passionate about this committee and trying to preserve that for the future generations, for our children. And I came in this committee and I knew absolutely nothing, but I'm one of the most goal-oriented persons that you'll ever meet in your life. So if you give me a task, I go. And I have, I learned a lot. I'm just going to run through what I've done in, with the committee this year, my accomplishments. First, I worked, the first week I was assigned the task with another committee member to revamp and rewrite the definition of the open space, coordinate with the Office of Community Correction to Pride Volunteers for the townwide cleanup. I've done outreach to the Herring Festival, Plymouth County Farm, and the Plymouth Public Library promoting the trails in open space. I facilitated a partnership between the Plymouth County Farm and Open Space Committee to help promote native planting. I have represented the Open Space Committee at meetings of the Select Board, Advisory and Finance for Convenance of Tax Title Properties, represented the committee to the town meeting members in support of the plastic bag ban and the nip ban. In 2023, I was honored to be elected the Chair. I went on to coordinate a public service announcements with Chapter 61 property with WPLM and ATD, participated as a guide to the open space binaural hikes, I volunteered on the binaural story walks. I, through the committee, went through invasive plant removal training, I've met with town officials to support the water station, the seaside trail, and I advocate for upgrades to the big property, bridge property amendment. And I would be very grateful if you guys reappointed me because there's still a lot of work to do and there's still a lot that I need to learn. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the committee. Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mann?
No questions.
Mr. Donaldson?
No questions.
Mr. Bennett?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Grandy?
Thank you for your previous service and I have no questions.
Thank you.
And I have no questions, as I know that that was a very abbreviated list of all of the things that you do and continue, have done and continue to do for the Open Space Committee.
Thank you.
So that is our list of candidates. As with the last, I'm going to go through all of the names. Again, we have two three-year terms, so as soon as we have a majority, so everybody gets to vote twice. So as soon as we have a majority for two candidates, then that is when we will have our two appointees. I will start with Delia Burns. Mr. Smith, you had a vote?
No.
Mr. Donaldson?
No.
Mr. Mann?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Grandy? And myself, no. Hunter Young. Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Donaldson?
No.
Mr. Mann?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Grandy? Myself, no. Liz Tracy. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Grandy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Stephanie Silva. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Grandy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Tracy, Ms. Silva, congratulations on your appointment and reappointment. Ms. Tracy, make sure you get sworn in. Tracy, make sure you get sworn in. I don't know if you can do it before the next meeting tomorrow, but if you can, that would be great. That is the end of our agenda for this evening. Is there any further business, topics not anticipated by the Chair or others 48 hours in advance of the meeting? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Calling the roll. Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett? Mr. Grandy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That concludes this meeting of the Planning Board for July 9. Thank you very much.